Are you going to sit and watch us talk?
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Clark, and I'm the council president. And the mayor is not here today, and so I have the honor to preside in her absence. We do not have a quorum present for today's meeting yet, but we expect that Councilor Zelenka will join us by phone, or that Councilor Ortiz will join us at the table here any minute now, at which point I will gavel in the meeting formally. But until then, we do not have a quorum to actually conduct the city's business. So we're going to have a nice conversation about something. And then if we get ourselves a quorum within the next couple of minutes, we'll gavel in our meeting. Anybody have anything fun to talk about? Because we don't have a quorum. Or we can all sit quietly, I guess.
Can't we get their reports?
I would want to wait, I think, until we actually gavel in the meeting. But...
I don't think you can do any agenda items.
I don't believe we can either.
If we can provide a little info share that you've previously received, and given that people might be tuning in at some point, just a reminder that Saturday is Eugene Financial Planning Day, and that's something that the City of Eugene is cosponsoring with the U.S. Conference of Mayors. And we have a large group of volunteers in the community, financial planning experts, who are lending their time for free to provide pro bono, no strings attached, financial planning to individuals in the community. And that will be happening starting at 10 o'clock at Sheldon Community Center on Saturday. So this sort of event has happened in communities across the country, and it's the first time we've tried it in Eugene. We don't know who's going to show up, but it's a chance for people to come get free financial advice, which is kind of an important thing to do right now.
Yeah. It could be very, very helpful. That's a great idea.
Great opportunity to connect with the community and educate folks about resources. I think it's outstanding. There's been some great discussions about them.
That's a great thing. Tell everybody the place and time again.
10 o'clock, starting 10:00 a.m. at Sheldon Community Center, running until mid-afternoon.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. I guess we could ask if there's any other announcements or issues that might merit further broadcast here. Oh, but I see Councilor Ortiz joining us here.
We have a quorum site, actually.
We do now. Chris?
Yeah. Welcome.
So I'm going to gavel in the session then, this Wednesday work session, October 20th, to talk about boards and commissions, and turn it over to the staff for their report.
Thank you, Councilor Clark. I'm here today filling in for city manager. And we're, as you said, going to be here today talking about boards and commissions. And as you recall, we've had a couple process sessions over the summer, and this topic evolved from those discussions. Well, today Kelly Osbourne, Beth Forrest, will be doing the presentation, but I'd also like to recognize the work done by Chris Block. Chris Block is going to be very heavily involved in our recruitment of boards and commission members. And today, we're going to be looking for some guidance and direction on about four topics related to membership, communication, training and development, and work plans from the advisory bodies. And with that, I'll turn it over to Beth and Kelly.
Thank you. I'll just open it up. Thanks again for this opportunity to talk about boards and commissions. This started as a germ of a request in one of the process sessions, following some appointment and refilling of vacancy issues specific to the Human Rights Commission, followed by a similar issue with, I believe, the Police Commission. And so it raised questions for council about how boards and commission members are appointed, how they might be removed, how vacancies are filled. And as additional questions came up, the work session was set. One of the things in your packet is a matrix or chart that lays out the standing advisory groups that are directly advisory to the council, and lays out some of the procedures for appointments, removal, reappointments. And you can see that there are differences among those. As they've been established, different procedures have been adopted by the city council. And so that's information in your packet. We've also provided information about the makeup of the boards and commissions, a demographic chart. There's an updated version at your place, which the one that was in your packet combined Fairmount and Far West. They both start with F, but they're not the same neighborhood association. And so the one that's at your place shows the breakout demographics, so you can get a better feel for the appointments to boards and commissions. There are no motions. We are not seeking specific action today. But just to skip straight to the options that staff put in the AIS, what we're thinking today could be is an opportunity for you to give us direction to develop code provisions if you want to see potential changes in some of those procedures, or just feedback. In addition, if you have feedback that you want to share with the staff who work with boards and commissions, or board and commission members themselves, about ways to enhance communication and work planning, so that they can work in alignment with you. And then we can also share a quick update on what we see ahead for recruitment. You adopted last year a change in the code that starts terms for the standing boards and commissions to begin July 1. And so rather than starting November 1, it's July 1, and we'll be looking at doing recruitment after the 1st of the year. And so Beth Forrest can give you a quick overview of what we're looking at in terms of recruitment right now. And then as part of your discussion, if you have feedback for us about things we can do as staff, and ways we can support you to broaden the recruitment effort, that would be great information for us.
I'll be really quick. Just wanted to update you on the schedule and our efforts to reach out and attract a diverse pool of applicants. We anticipate there will be about 22 vacancies on your standing committees, and another 20 or so opportunities to serve on permanent advisory committees. Annual recruitment will start off in mid-January, and we'll kick it off with press releases, webpage updates, a distribution of the list of vacancies, the timelines, and the application procedures. And we'll get those to staff, advisory group members, neighborhood associations, and other interested groups. And it's our hope, then, that these groups will join you to further publicize the opportunities via neighborhood newsletter articles, meeting announcements, and just networking around the community. Leading up to the official recruitment opening, we'll be working with staff to publicize opportunities to volunteer and serve the community and the council. We've developed a couple of documents that are at your places, and we hope to distribute those at city facilities, neighborhood association meetings, advisory group meetings, and community events, such as the Neighborhood Summit and the upcoming best practices training on November 6. These resources may also be used in connection with diversity and equity strategic plan-related initiatives to orient community members on the city services and processes. So if you'd like a personal supply of those, just let us know, and we'll get those into your packets. Then the recruitment period will end on March 31st, on or about, and should allow plenty of time for initial balloting, interviews, and then the final balloting with appointments in June, mid-June sometime. So this new schedule should allow... We hope to avoid the crunch that we usually feel around interview time.
That completes our presentation.
Okay. Thank you very much. I have Betty in the queue first.
How could that be? First, this looks excellent. I haven't read it all yet, but it looks really good. And will you tell me again, you're planning to, are you planning to give these to neighborhood groups?
If they would like a supply, yes, to have at meetings.
Well, I wonder if you're going to just give them to every neighborhood association, or...
Yes. We'll distribute to neighborhood associations, and also make ready for them articles that they can place in neighborhood newsletters, so that we can reach residents.
This is really good, answering questions that people might have about, how can I speak at a public forum, for example? A lot of people don't know those things at all. And I think this is excellent. I have a question. Do you know how long it's been? I know it's been a long time since the Budget Committee was appointed one member from each councillor. Do you...
I do not have the answer to that, but we could find out.
And I wonder how complicated it would be, assuming we wanted to do that, to start that system again. I have, I know that it was before, I know it was probably at least, well, it's more than 16 years ago, I think. But sometime that was done. And since there's an equal number, it would be easy for each of us, for each council member, to appoint one.
It's a good topic to give consideration to. We have...
And I think it's, at least, you could find someone who had similar views, which is, rather than having them all be same kind, you don't know for sure how they're going to think after they're there, but I think it would help to have someone representing your part of the city who has similar views, that's more likely they'd be representing the citizens to them.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to insert myself in the queue here and say, great work. This is very, very nice to all of you, and all the work that you're doing around this is very much appreciated. I can tell you that as a member of the Police Commission, we recently completed a brochure that lets people know what the Police Commission is and what it does as well. So that may be another piece of literature that you could add to the process of getting information out there about what service on boards and commissions is about. I looked over the demographic sheet that you provided here, and Betty has highlighted the one key and the most important issue for me, and that's demographic diversity on boards and commissions. I've made a, pounded the table about that a little bit over time, but as I look at this list of where we are right now, 67% of all boards and commission members are from four wards in our community. 58% of them are from wards 1, 2, and 3, and all in South Eugene. I don't think that represents our community very well, and specifically, the Budget Committee has, five of the eight members are just from wards 2 and 3. And there are absolutely no members of the Budget Committee from wards 4, 5, or 6. And I think that's really an inappropriate distribution pattern, and a part of that is what the council decides at the table. But I would hope that we have a proactive recruitment process until such a time as we may or may not make any changes in how we appoint. I absolutely agree with Betty. That's what the county does, is that each of the people in the, in each chair appoints one person. And I think, I could absolutely support that. But I think that this kind of distribution pattern inevitably leads to decisions and advice for council that may be less than complete. And we have, in the city, an active policy, and we've talked many times about an active policy around issues of diversity, actively recruiting, rather than just being willing to accept. And I'd like to see us actively recruiting. I know we had, in this last time, in this last round, a number of applicants from those other wards, but none were chosen. And I was sad that that took place, but hopefully we can find ways to remedy that. Betty?
You do not agree with me. This is, I'm not talking about geographic diversity at all. I don't think, I'm talking about philosophical. And it doesn't matter what part of town you live in. When I've had the opportunity, for example, to appoint someone to the Sustainability Commission, that person wasn't from my ward, but it was a person who had, I thought, the right attributes and the right philosophy and ability. And I don't at all think it should be geographic. There are some parts of the city where there are just more people who want to be involved than in other parts. And also, I think that it should start with, as long as they're informed, it should start with people who want to be involved, rather than... But if you get a chance to appoint a member of the Budget Committee, you could certainly do one from your ward. And then, I don't think people always vote that way either. I think there have been people from my ward whom I didn't vote for, and other people probably did. I just don't see it being, where you live, having anything to do with it.
Okay. Thanks. George?
Thanks. I, yeah, I just want to kind of follow up on something Betty said, and then a couple other thoughts. It's like, when I, when I look at the candidates, I don't, I don't, I usually don't even look and see what ward they're from, what part of town. I, because I don't want, and that's a cloud, what I hear from them when we ask them the questions. And so I, I mean, there, like Betty, and perhaps other councillors, there have been people that I didn't vote for who were from my ward. Because, not that I thought, okay, you know, maybe in the future you could do this, or serve on some other board or commission, but there's other people that I think are better qualified right now, and more experienced than you, and so I wouldn't vote for somebody. And they were from my ward. But, so that's going to happen. I'm looking for someone who hopefully has a little bit of experience, but more than that, really wants to serve, and wants to, and is willing to learn, and is willing to sit through the long, all the long hours, and maybe willing to take training, you know, and study extra, kind of like going back to school. I'm going to serve in this commission and board, and so that means I have to do a lot of work now, to get up, to speak with the people that are there. So that's the kind of person I'm looking for. But I agree that, I mean, actually, I'm kind of proud that Ward 1 is, has the most of any, of any, you know? Really, it's the highest. And I don't know why that is. Why 1, 2, and 3? Is it because that those three border on the university area? Is it because there's more, maybe more people with college degrees in those three wards? I don't know. Is it socio-economic? Are they better off financially, so that they have time to volunteer? I mean, I don't really know what the, why that difference is, but it's, you're right, it's striking. I'm not really sure what to do about it. I think that this is really good, and initially, I thought, when we had this discussion a few months ago, I thought, okay, well, maybe it's up to all of the councillors, we councillors, to go to, you know, when we go to our neighborhood meeting, just like tell everybody, it's like, hey, look, our ward's underrepresented. I mean, you know, in all these boards and commissions, like, get together, step up, come forward and be counted. But then, I've been to lots of neighborhood meetings where there's 10 people. 10 out of the, what, the 20,000 that live in that ward? You know, so I don't know if that's the way. I think, I think maybe distributing something like this at every single public meeting, no matter what it's about, like in Vision Eugene, and meeting, all the meetings at the library, and all the things like that. And then when there is a big recruitment coming up, do that, because I don't think just announcing at neighborhood meetings is going to be enough. Not so initially, but I don't believe that anymore. Thanks.
Thank you. Andrea?
Thank you, Mike. And thanks to the staff for putting this together. I know this is above and beyond what you guys are, your job, description are, so I really do appreciate all the effort that all the staff puts into everything they bring to us. I almost take exception with some of the things you said, George, but I won't go there. I'll just let that lie. I just, I just, you know, I just do. I've heard, anecdotally, that the process, I mean, the process that we put people through the paces, and this is us as a council, this has nothing to do with staff, we make it very hard on people to participate. I look at our boards and commissions, not for people who are well-versed, not for people who are more educated, not for people who know how to speak our language. I look to encourage people to be involved in public government. And I don't know how we get to them, what avenues it is, but to encourage them to participate is really important to me, because our demographics have changed, people are different, and we need new leaders. You know, we need to encourage people to step up and to be a part of this community, if they're, if they're able to, if they don't have three jobs and five kids. You know, I mean, even if they want to, they're more than welcome to also, but I know, as a young mother, I could have never participated in anything until my kids were in high school. And I probably should have minded them a little bit more. So, you know, I think this is all fine, but, and I like the template, this is good. I'm just, I kind of want to see us, as a council, look at the process that we put people through, because I think it's a little, I mean, I remember when I applied to the Human Rights Commission, I had three interviews. I interviewed more for that than I did for any job I've ever had. And that can be a little bit, you know, for people who aren't well-versed in city ease, you know, that's a little overwhelming, a little threatening. So I would like for us to look at a different way of doing that personally, because I think that there are a lot of people out there who are willing to step up, but they just feel, you know, that the process is, you know, has, we are over-processed, I guess would be the best term to use. And so, and I'm also kind of concerned about the 31 folks who didn't respond of their ethnicity, because to me, that's, well, that's a third of people. So we don't really know, you know, what, I mean, I'm not concerned about it, that's fine, they don't have to respond, but I just kind of wonder, you know, who they are, and, you know, it'd be nice to know. So, but, you know, and there's definitely, you know, lacking in communities of color. I'm just wondering how this would look against the demographics of the city, of the county. You know, I don't know if you want to do the city piece, or the county piece, whatever. I would like, you know, like, what percentage? So, but thank you, guys, it was, it's good.
Thanks. Chris?
Yeah, this is a really interesting conversation, because I'm of, as I often am, of two minds on where this could go. To me, this all boils down to the key concept of what really is representation? What does that really mean? And we talk about it right now for boards and commissions, but it applies all the way to the city council. We have a ward system, so we can try to create some sort of diversity across the entire community. It's true that, you know, you have to show up for the game in order to be able to play. And so if people are not showing up for the game, why should you expect them to be able to play? On the other hand, if you make the rules so difficult, and if you put the game on the top of a mountain where nobody can get to, then you can't show up for the game. And that's, that really is a balance we have to try to figure out. Because I do agree, I think the system for being on boards and commissions is challenging. I think it's hard. We don't make it necessarily easy to do. I remember applying for a couple of committees when I was, you know, just an average citizen, and I had to jump through a lot of hoops. I didn't get it, figured I wasn't good enough. So, you know, that's, that's kind of part of what you go through as well. And it's also, what do we want out there? What does representation mean to us? You know, I hear somebody say, to me, representation means people who agree with me, who think like I do. Or somebody might say, it represents geography. It represents people from all different parts of town. Or it might be some other form of diversity, or some other form of representation. I don't know the answer to that necessarily. I think there needs to be something that is representative of this community, as much as we possibly can. I don't want to have the people who advise us on what to do for this community to not represent this community, in all of its, in all of its different ways. And I know that there are some people who don't want to participate because they have lost confidence that their participation will be meaningful. And I've talked with a number of folks who have said, why would I want to be, why would I want to go to all that trouble? Why would I want to do all that work and go to all those meetings? Well, you're not going to listen to me anyway. I mean, I've seen planning commissions, I've seen advisory boards come to this room, give their recommendation, and the council says, thank you very much, we'll go and do what we want to do. And we're not obligated to take their advice, but they have worked a long time on it, and sometimes you need to give it some credibility. So why play if I'm, if I, if I don't think it's going to mean anything? So, representation is a key issue, but I think it has to be meaningful. It has to be accessible, it has to be meaningful, and it has to be something that truly reaches an outcome that people can believe in, and not just something you do because you have to do it. We don't have a group because we have to have the group. We have the group because we want to have the group. That's why this is the place where the conversation has to occur. And I appreciate having the conversation, it's too bad not more of us are here, because I think it would be great to hear from some of our other members. But it's less about answers than questions.
Thanks, Chris. I put myself in round two here to say that I'm taking off on what you said. I have heard specifically, and it's an interesting kind of comment, because I've heard it when I served, in the kind of conversations you have at Human Rights Commission, when I served on there, I've heard many people who are neighbors of mine, and friends of mine, who, when I ask them about getting involved in city things, have said, people like me aren't listened to. And I think there's a real issue around self-identification of people like me. That's, I would use that as a way for people to describe whether or not they're well-represented in civic life. And I think that part of that is addressed with the geographical piece here, and that's why I bring it up, because I think some of that has, has a great deal to do with this. And I share the view that we ought to have, as representative, a sample as is possible to get, and we ought to work hard to try and accomplish it. When we're, we're having that work done, feeding the decisions that we make at this table, it ought to be as representative of the community as is possible to get. I would say that we have had a wide pool of applicants, and we have had, like we did in this last Budget Committee appointment, where we had what I perceived as equally qualified candidates, and obviously, the rest of the table did not, but I perceived as equally qualified candidates, one from Ward 4, and the other from Ward 8, I believe, were three, it was three, I guess, where we had that opportunity, but the council chose otherwise. And I wish we hadn't. There's another issue for me here, and it's the number of people who participate in boards and commissions who aren't City of Eugene residents. And I don't, I don't know. There's a part of that that's troubling for me as well, because of the level to which that influences the decisions that are made here. How wide is that permissible? If we want to have people from outside who aren't residents of the City of Eugene be a part of the process, how wide does that, does that go? Can we have people who live in Oak Ridge as part of the process? How about Springfield? You know, that's a legitimate part of this conversation that I'd like to see us have a little bit more. That's all I have. And I have Andrea next.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, I'm sure you guys are doing it, but these are going to be in Spanish also? Okay. We'll get on it. Okay. Thanks.
Betty?
Thank you. I just wanted to respond to what Chris said about not taking advice. An advisory group is just that, an advisory group, and I think it's important to listen, but just the fact that they spend a lot of time doesn't mean you have to do what they advise. Also, I, what I've heard from some people is, we're short on minority opinions from those groups. We've had special committees, and there might be three or four, maybe almost half the people who don't agree with the report that comes out. And they usually have been ignored. Sometimes we've had a minority opinion, I've been bad for those, and sometimes it's happened. But I think we should consider all advice, as well as things that other people in the community say. But if people spend a lot of time on it, obviously, we should listen, but it doesn't mean we have to do what they think we should do. We should be prepared to say why we don't think that's the right thing, but it is not a final, and they shouldn't, shouldn't expect, shouldn't have an expectation that we say this, therefore you do this. Are we going, are we going to talk about commissions and excluding people, or firing people today, too? Is that, is that coming later? Okay.
Yeah. If you're done, Betty, I apologize. Are you finished?
I think so. I wanted to respond to something you said, but what was it?
I'm not going to help you if that's what you're asking.
It was something I agreed with, the last thing you said.
Well, then, let's try.
Doesn't matter. Let's forget it.
Okay.
I just wanted to recap a little bit what we're hearing you say right now, and then address what Councilor Taylor raised. A year ago, June, you adopted three outcomes, and I think those speak exactly to the discussion you just had. One is about representation, which is that the makeup of boards, commissions, and committees over time should represent the richness of our community's perspectives, neighborhoods, and population demographics. So that's over time. There's a role that staff has in that, which is the recruitment and outreach to provide you an applicant pool that you can look, and then it's in your hands. And so any feedback you have today, or as it comes to, bright ideas, or don't feel like they have to be bright, just, you know, give us a call, drop us an email. If there are things where you feel like we're missing an opportunity to do good outreach on your behalf, let us know, so that we can get, help you meet that outcome. The other two outcomes that I think go to what your discussion has also been about right now, is you talked about recruitment and selection in terms of the kind of process you use, and are you running people through the wringer? So one of the outcomes that you also adopted was that the communication and procedures associated with outreach, recruitment, interviews, selection, and appointments will be fair, accessible, transparent, and civil. And you made a commitment to keep working on that, and so we'll, we'll work from our end to support you in doing that. And then, an outcome around board, commission, and committee member development. And that gets both at the people who are on boards and commissions, and those who might think about getting on boards and commissions. And so part of that is providing trainings and support, so people can be successful contributors. And so the Neighborhood Summit is an example of that. We have a best practices training on November 6, which is another example of that. And then, as part of the diversity and equity strategic plan, one of the action items in there is to continue building on training that would also be available to people who aren't already on boards and commissions. Sort of the Citizens Academy idea, to try to help people better understand this organization, so that they might think of themselves as leaders. And leadership might be asking to be on a board and commission, but it might show up in other ways. And so if you have feedback about that, again, if you don't, you don't... And so, if you have feedback about that, again, if you don't, you don't have to necessarily tell us today, but we always welcome that feedback so we can do that well. So, those, get your discussion, then Councilor Taylor asked the question about removing folks from boards and commissions. That's the matrix we provided. It's the procedures associated with appointing and filling vacancies. And we just put that in front of you. We don't have specific recommendations or information other than this and wanted your feedback about whether you wanted to revisit some of these procedures that are in the city code.
Thanks very much. Did you want to finish that part of yours?
Oh, the thing that I agreed with you about?
On the 34 lines.
Yeah. Yeah, if I could say something else, too. Yes, I, I don't, I didn't know we had people from outside the city on boards and commissions.
Yeah.
Yes. On the urban growth boundary. Right, within the urban growth boundary.
Oh. I think that's questionable in a way. But I don't understand why people think it's so difficult to go through the process. I also applied for something, one of them wasn't chosen. I was interviewed by a group of people, and I didn't know why they didn't want me, but they did. But I don't think it's, I don't think we've been difficult to deal, I don't think those interviews have been difficult. I know, I have always suggested, when I think of it, that we should give them a glass of water. That's important. But I don't think we ask hard questions, and I think everybody's been really polite. So, I don't quite know what, what you're talking about, or what they're talking about. Anybody tell me that? I guess Andrea can.
If she wants to have being around, then it's Chris's turn next, and then we'll get to that.
Yeah, I'll go fast. And I do want to agree with Betty. I don't think we want to create an expectation that an advisory committee has some sort of an authority. I mean, we've struggled really hard to make sure people recognize that an advisory committee is giving advice. What I don't want to do is, though, create the impression that we find it real easy to dismiss what they've worked so hard on. So, you take the advice, you want to at least give it some serious thought, some consideration. If you still want to say no, that's absolutely fine. That's what our job is. But not to go, "I haven't finished your report, so I can say no," which I haven't really run across a lot lately, but I think it has happened in some occasions in the past, and I think we've worked really hard to not be that way. With regard to, you know, how do you get good representation? You know, one idea that I toyed with for about two seconds was, "Well, what if you created like a jury system where people are like jury duty? You do boards and commissions the way you do jury duty." And then, I was reminded of the time we had one group where we were appointing four members, and so, I made my recommendation for four people. And I thought, "I'm going to be clever. I'm going to go randomly pick four people from the phone book and see if they're willing to serve." Because that, to me, would be real random. And every single person they called had to wash their hair that night or, you know, couldn't do it. And I was really kind of surprised at how little interest there was in being involved in government with the folks that were just randomly selected and that had made a great impression on me. So, I do think that there's very much a self-selection process that goes on here. And we can't ignore that, but we do have to figure out, to the degree we can, to try to maintain as much diversity as we can. I know this is going to be a self-selected process, and a jury system wouldn't work. People would hate you for being there, and they wouldn't do their job properly, and they wouldn't take the time to learn. But at the same time, you don't want it to become, and I know somebody once got in trouble for calling it the usual suspects, but there, there are folks who are active, and they participate, and they get involved, and they always show up for the game. And I think those are important people to listen to. But I'd love to see some fresh blood and some other perspectives and to the degree to which we can provide that outreach, I think would be really helpful.
Andrea?
So, I just want to make this one comment about the matrix before I kind of speak to Betty's comments. I would like to see that be uniform across so that there's no questions about, and I like the part about if they, if they don't meet a certain threshold or if there's behavior that's inappropriate, that it's a recommendation to us. And I, and I'm, because I see that the Planning Commission has six consecutive scheduled meetings versus three from the other groups. And how often does the Planning Commission meet?
A lot.
A lot. So, three to them, so could you just ask them if they could live with four or three? I mean, I'd like to just see it uniform. And then, if there was a way to articulate to us the rationale, if, you know, and not to be pointing a finger, but just like, if there was a matrix or like a checkbox, you know, miss three meetings or, you know, whatever. So, so I think that our process is, I don't like to use this word too much because it kind of becomes a key word, but, you know, there's some institutional racism with the way that we do our stuff. I mean, we expect people to come here, we sit in a circle, and we have an audience with them. And, you know, that's intimidating to some people. You know, I would like for us to think about taking our show on the road. If we want people from your ward, Mike, why can't we do our interviews in your ward at one of the parks?
Great idea.
You know, I mean, I think, you know, and why do we need to ask them questions again when we've had them write up a essay on the same three questions? I would like our process to be a little bit more informal and get to know them as people. And something that somebody else mentioned to me from when I was in Cleveland, they do like a background check on people, you know, just kind of run them through their local police department, you know, just to make sure, like, you know, and a million and a half people, that's a different story. So, I don't know if that would fly here. I mean, I'm not married to it. But I really think that, you know, it's overwhelming what we ask people to do, you know. And if you're not, if you're just trying to get your feet wet, you know, and trying to check it out and see if it's what you want to do, it's very intimidating. So, you know, I think that it's very, I think it's very cumbersome. And, you know, I'm, I feel like I've got a pretty thick skin, and I was very uncomfortable when I went through my three interviews. And so, that's, that's what my challenge is. So, I would really like for us to think outside the box around how we do that process. Once a person's answered all those questions, how do we interview them? I don't think we need to ask them the same questions. We go around and we ask them the same questions again or that are referred to on their handwritten application that they put in, you know. Could we do it more informally? Can we, you know, do it like an evening? You know, like with, you know, have, you know, something to drink and something to snack on and just have people come and visit with us, you know? If you're interested in being there, come and chat with us, you know? And each of us have a copy of their, of their applications and just kind of, you know, if people show up, you know, have everybody show up. Why do we only need to interview the handful that, you know, we've all supported or, you know, wanted to appoint? I mean, I think that that would be more comfortable, and I think it would be less of a, I wouldn't want to use the word threat, but I don't know. It's a heavy thing that we ask them to do.
Yeah, I would say, too, I don't know anybody who would describe me as shy. I have a pretty thick skin, too. I'm pretty tough to intimidate. And I remember six years ago when I was being interviewed for Budget Committee, sitting down at the end of the table, that I was a little bit, you know, I was a little bit nervous to be in that environment as well. I kind of like your idea of us going to them. I think that's an interesting idea. I'd be all in favor of talking about that.
I mean, just like, you know, not quite the jury system, but anybody who applies and then, you know, respond to them with a note card saying, "We're going to be, you know, visiting with everybody who applied," and then we can go from there. I mean, I think the applications speak to themselves.
Sure. Let's have a real conversation of getting to know people. I think that's a really good idea. I'd be very interested in that, too. Betty?
I don't like it.
That's because all the people are from your, one of your wards.
I would be, if I were applying, I would, if I had to sit in a seat and answer questions, I'd know what I was doing. If I had to go to a party and circulate, I would just probably go stand in a corner somewhere because I would feel really strange. And, but what I wanted to say, you mentioned the Citizens, Citizens Academy. I've been recommending that for about at least 10 years now. And I think it's a good way to get, if people learn something about it, then they're more likely to apply. Also, when we got rid of the Citizens Involvement Committee, that was very unfortunate, I thought. Part of those people were chosen at random. And I, I've served on it at first, when I was first on council. There was, I think there were two counselors on it, I'm not sure now. But I know that there were people there who'd never known anything about the government, and they were really interested, they were really thrilled to have been asked. And I don't know how many people had to be asked, they were taken from the voters' roles, I think. And they did find people who wanted to come, who'd never thought of doing anything with government, who were really enthusiastic. And I think that was a thing that I've asked a number of times to reinstate it, but we haven't done that. But I've, but if we had the Citizens Academy, I think people might think that's fun. If we had a session, a group of meetings for Planning Commission, for Budget Committee for each one, and, and have some at noon and some at night because people have different kinds of schedules. That's, that's the diversity we have in Eugene is there are many, many people who don't work a straight nine to five. There are lots of different kinds of schedules. But I think that people would see if we advertise it, they'd think, "Oh, I'd like to know more about that." And it would be a social thing, too. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. George?
Thanks. I wonder if going out to the neighborhoods would, would get any different of a response. I think it's an interesting idea. I think it's worth a try. But, you know, we had a similar conversation at the Police Commission meeting, and I think it was Juan Carlos's idea. And so, we did. We went to Sheldon. We had a Police Commission meeting in Sheldon. I think two people showed up, maybe, maybe two, count them. So, you know, of course, we only did it the one time. Maybe you need to keep trying and not give up. So, he's all, and, and maybe, I really don't know what, what the solution is. I, I think as far as we're concerned, that the current system works pretty good. But we may be intimidating some people. I think, I think that people that want to serve on boards and commissions should attend the meetings. A lot of times, I've seen applicants, what I've never seen, I never saw them in a Police Commission meeting, and I never saw them in a Human Rights Commission meeting. I mean, of course, I've only been doing it for two years, but I never saw them. So, maybe that would be something that people that are interested could do is actually start attending the meetings and get, and gradually get to know the people that are there. And then, you know, there's a vacancy, then bam, they're kind of, "Wow, I can do this. I could be, I could be on this." This suggestion to the applicants, like, "Start attending the meetings."
Thanks. Chris?
This is really a great conversation because it raises a lot of what are really interesting questions about what is representation, what isn't? How far should you reach out to try to bring people in who may fight kicking and screaming being brought into the system? And I like the idea of being able to reach out to people to create more accessibility. And I think that's really what you're trying to get at, is how can you make the system more accessible? And it, and it may be that we can craft a way that doesn't feel as intimidating as sitting at a table being grilled by, you know, the elected officials, that's a little more informal, that provides a little bit more of a comfortable setting, but not one where it's just come or don't come, willy-nilly, you can stand in a corner if you want to, you know. It needs to be formalized in some way, but also accessible. So, I keep coming back to the notion of, you know, hard versus easy, or hard versus accessible. I think really wanting to focus our attention is, what are the barriers to participating in boards and commissions? I think it would probably not be too difficult to compile a list of, what are the principal obstacles and barriers to people participating? It could be around socioeconomic, it could be around geographic, it could be around not understanding the system, it could be around any, I don't even know what all the reasons are. But I would really want to be able to look at the list of likely barriers and say, "How many of these can we knock out of the way?" We may not have to reinvent the wheel. I mean, it may be that our system is not too far off, and really, what we need to do is to just make it more accessible and have fewer barriers. And it may be that that is all you really need to do to make the system significantly better. I don't, I don't have to, you know, completely reinvent something if it really doesn't need to be reinvented. But I do know that the current system as it's standing right now is not as good as that could be. I don't think it's as accessible as it could be. And I know that some people are just going to be more participatory than others. I understand that. But I think there's this middle ground of people who could be more participatory if they just thought it was easier for them to be participatory and give them the chance to get involved. I think that would be what I'd look for. So, I'm maybe not looking for the big change, but I'm looking for some things that we could do that just make it this much easier for people to participate in the system and feel fulfilled in doing it.
Anybody else? Betty, round five.
Is that all? I like George's suggestion that they would go to meetings. I would think people would do that automatically. If you're thinking you want to get involved in something, you go look at it and see what it's like. And it shows that they really have an interest, too, if they, if they attend. I was on the Police Commission at one time, I think two times briefly. Resigned both times, but, and back, the first time I was on it, somebody had this idea of going out, having the meetings different places. One of the meetings, I think maybe two people came. And another one, we had a lot of people, but someone had influence with a, with a teacher in a certain school, and, and she told her class that they would, that they were supposed to go there, and they would get credit. So, those were the only people there that time. And that's kind of a fake participation. So, I think, I really think if things are at City Hall, people, it's a sin, it's a place that people know where it is and they can get there. Whereas other places may be hard to find or, I don't think it makes a difference. I think this is the seat of city government for now, and this is...
Well said.
And I hope in the future, that's all. I'm through with, I won't, I don't want a round six, thank you.
Anyone else? Kristi?
Councilor Clark, if I may, just a couple thoughts. And so, we're getting a lot of good feedback about how we can improve the process. And I think there is a strong desire to get out, do more outreach to the community about where we're headed and how they can get involved. And I think it, it can go one step further. It's not only when it's time to be recruited for boards and commissions, but really helping people become educated about the opportunities that are available, maybe participating in different meetings that come up. I know personally, you know, having been a little bit involved in some neighborhood associations, it's really hard to get people to come to meetings or to sort of get them interested in the topics. But I do think there are a lot of people that just aren't aware of how to get involved. So, I think that we're coming up with a lot of good suggestions. And I think that it's important to remember that while we might do more outreach, it doesn't preclude, you know, using this as a site as well. We just need to sort of expand what we're doing, it sounds like. The other thing that we have an opportunity here, since we're going to be starting the recruitment efforts in January, is that correct? That we could maybe come back with some ideas and present them about how we move forward, take into consideration all the feedback that we received, and move forward, so.
Did you get everything you needed today for this?
Did you guys? I did.
Well, I think this was a very good conversation, and with nothing further on the agenda, I adjourn the meeting.